Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December 11th Board of Selectment meeting. This meeting is a hybrid meeting, which means we're in person as well as conducting the meeting remotely. The remote portion of the meeting is followed with a guidance issued by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts regarding open meeting law, which allows us to utilize Zoom video conferencing technology to join a meeting. We have provided everyone on the agenda with a Zoom link to connect to the meeting along with a meeting ID and a meeting cast rule. The first item of business this evening are citizens' comments.
Anybody have a comment?
There being none, the next item of business this evening is a moment of silence to remember Selectmen. Love it, Bob Springett. Bob passed away last week. It is a huge loss to the Dover community, his passing. It was really an honor for me to serve with him as a selectman and to call him friends. He was absolutely passionate about Dover and dedicated all of his retirement to the Dover community. We are really, as a community, missing without him. John, I'm sure you want to say something to the floor.
Yes, thank you, Robin. First, to Bob's wife Cindy, to his children Lauren, Martin, and Amy, my sincere condolences. Many of you know that Cindy was the person who nominated me into our town caucus in our last election. Cindy has been a great supporter of everything that we have done. Cindy keeps you from dating lost people. She serves on account of the budget. I'm going to share with you a very quick story, and then we're going to move on to business at hand this evening because Bob was here today to keep it quick. When Bob and I first met, Bob is a sailor, for those of you that don't know. He's a big, beautiful sailor. Bob knew that I grew up in a seaside town, and Bob asked, the very first time we met, "Do you sail?" And I said, "Yes." And then, in true Bob Springett fashion, he asked, "Are you any good?" Now, for those of you who don't sail, you cannot hide from this question because there's only two types of sailors. There's the skipper and everyone else. So I said, "No, I kind of suck." He laughed out loud, and I knew right then that we would be friends and easy to work with. It's been a pleasure to work with Bob for the past six years. Bob ran for selectman on a platform of change. He wanted to modernize, make technological improvements, create accountability, and financial discipline. Bob demanded, defined objectives, and clearly understood deliverables. He wanted civil business approach to all the businesses in Dover. Bob was a selectman. Within four weeks of his first meeting as a selectman, half the people in the townhouse had either taken a new job, quit, or retired. We had a new board, a new select board, and a very empty building with a lot to do. That summer, we met weekly. We began the process of rebuilding and board reinforcing every section of our organization. We hired consultants, we hired temps, we created search committees, we created committees for rail trail, leases, technology, HR, free cash, OPEC, benefits, Carroll Building, hail, highway, and more. For every item under our guidance, we moved rocks and we asked difficult questions. Bob's impact on every one of these items was significant and meaningful. It's unfair to single out one of the many, many things Bob directed, but his most recent in his was the guidance and his leadership of the community center. Next year, we will complete the community center project, and this will indeed be a great day for Dover and Bob Springett. Bob's family has asked for a rule of flowers. We're setting up a Friends of Dover Community Center fund where donations may be made in his honor or anyone's honor. I ask that you consider this and remember.
In that, John, let's have a moment of silence to remember Bob Springett. In memory of Bob, who's a stay on track, the next item of business is item 1.2, and that is the reorganization of the Board of Selectmen. So with Bob's departure from the Board, Bob was our chair, so we need to reorganize the Board. For the short term, we will conduct business with just two members, and then I will ask, after the reorganization, we will ask the town administrator just to go through the procedures that we will need to follow in connection with having a special election and timelines associated with that.
So, Madam Chair, I am going to make the first motion, and I move to appoint Robin Hunter as Chair of the Board of Selectmen.
And there's a caveat to that. There, Mr. Jeffries and I are going to split Bob's remaining term as Chair. So I will do the first half, and then John will take over the second half, which will then roll into his, how does it roll, his chair.
Roll his chair.
So I'll step in.
You've got to say it, all in favor, aye, John Jeffries?
Aye, Robin Hunter.
Thank you. And just to echo Robin's comments to anyone who's watched the meetings for any number of years, the Board of Selectmen in Dover is very much a flat organization that runs with
Weather.
With three independently elected selectmen. Although we do have a chair, a clerk, and members who are required, our leadership style and our working process has not really been one of hierarchical. It's been organizational, it's been collaborative, and we felt, in light of these circumstances, to follow the practice that had been established once before and to split the remaining months, working together in every way continuous that we have done in the past.
And then I just think for the record, I will begin as Chair effective today, December 11th, through the end of February, and Mr. Jeffries will start from March 1st through May. He'll be fortunate enough to be over.
It's a year.
Right. So I thought it might be just good if you could just go through the process we're both going to be taking of boarding up tonight, but just to let citizens know what the process is for adding the whole remainder to the process.
Absolutely. So the process for filling a vacancy on the Board of Selectmen is outlined in Mass. General Law, and you, as the remaining two members, will have two options. So one is to do nothing. You can remain two members through the next annual election. It happens that Bob's term was up in May, so there would be an election for a full term at that time. Your other option is to call for a special election. You could do that at any time. You do have to have a minimum of 64 days between when you call for that election and when the election is held. So if you choose to avail yourself of that option, I recommend we work with the town clerk to look at suitable dates. For example, there's already a state primary in March, so perhaps that's something you could look to coincide with. So instead of having a separate election with additional costs and workers, you might be able to kind of tag team those options together. I will make one note that should you do nothing and wait until the annual town election, residents do have the option to file a petition of 200 registered voters, which would force a special election, should you choose not to pursue that.
So I suggest maybe in our next meeting, we have that as an item of business, and we can make the determination on how to proceed.
Perfect.
That's all right. Thank you. Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Michael.
That's Chris.
We interchange.
So the next item of business this evening, and I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Jeffries, is to interview the final candidates for the police chief position. And Mr. Jeffries?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Mona is bringing our two final candidates in, and as she does that, I want to recognize I'm joined here with Mr. Paul Puppi. Paul, thank you very much. On Zoom, Joe DeSalvo, Kristen Daly Bartlett. How are you, sir?
Jeffries.
Just introducing some of the other members of our committee who are with us. You know Paul, Joe's on Zoom, Kristen's on Zoom, Dan Berger is on his way, so he'll be joining us live at some point in time. So you've met everyone here this evening. I just want to give our viewers and some folks that have seen this for the first time a little overview of the process, so bear with me just for a couple of seconds.
Absolutely.
Give everybody the background. So this process started approximately five months ago. It's been just over six months. And this process began first by the Board of Selectmen hiring a consulting firm, Russ Stevens and his firm. Russ is an acting chief, together with several other acting chiefs there. Company helps towns, municipalities like ours with this process. The process began with an open application. Michael and Joe both submitted applicants, applications along with 30 other candidates. Our first job as the selection committee was to review all those applications, which was rigorous. There was a lot of, there was a lot of work that went into that process. We, our first two or three meetings took to reduce the 30 applicants down to 12. The 12 applicants were then given an additional amount of work to do by Russ and his group that contained 12 questions, 12 written questions that each applicant returned to us. There was an additional mountain of work to be done. We read through all the answers to all the questions from all the applicants, each of us. We then returned, we met several times, we reduced that pool down to six. We then reduced the six to the group of three that went through the assessment process. So the assessment process was one of the most powerful things as an administrator I've ever been through. Paul, would you like to comment on any of that? Joe and Kristen, I think you'll agree that what the candidates went through that day for us was eye-opening. We, it was an entire day. It was a six or seven-hour day for the candidates to go through. There was lunch involved, there was an assessment panel that reviewed all of the questions and all of the interactions that the candidates had with the panel. Each segment contained a different set of criteria, and the candidates were to role-play in the process, which was a really deep, deep insight into a day in the life of a police chief in the town of Dover and in the towns that they work with, work in. After that, after the, all of the tabulation of that process, we, the select group, met, the selection group, we met, we reviewed, we reviewed, we debated, and we decided to move two candidates forward. It was that close. I can tell you, from my perspective, we have been so thoroughly impressed with our final two candidates that typically what happens is one person outshines the others, and that person is moved forward. In this case, we had two fabulous candidates. I am telling you tonight in front of everyone that if it's not Dover, you are going to be a great chief somewhere. You have everything it takes, and we felt that about you, we felt that about Joe, and I just want you to know that.
Thank you.
Paul, would you like to add anything?
I don't think so at this point in the process.
Joe, Kristen, Kristen, would you like to add anything?
I'm all set. Sounds great. Thank you.
Joe?
I just want to thank, thank you for the effort you put into this. We know this is a lot of work. It must be a lot of words of English as well. We very much appreciate your commitment to this process and not showing at least any frustration in the way.
Thank you.
So we would like to give you the floor, tell the rest of the town of Dover just a little bit about you, and let me about yourself and your reaction to the process or anything else you'd like to add.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to offer my condolences again on the passing of Mr. Springett, and again, very sorry. It's a huge loss for the Board, obviously, and a loss for the town of Dover as well, obviously as well. So as I've discussed with you before, I'm born and bred the town of Norwood, lifelong resident, actually live in the same house, my family house that my father built, so I've moved nowhere in my life, very stable. Attended Zavarian Brothers High School, where I kind of had, you know, growing up bad and combined with the fact that my father was the deputy fire chief in the town, sort of that lifetime of service and service of the community attitude. I attended Northeastern University as a criminal justice major, and I was very fortunate at 19 years old to come here and be interviewed by Chief Sheridan, and he hired me as their Northeastern dispatcher, and then appointed me as a special police officer, and that's where I began my policing career was in Dover. And as I say, there were people who I worked with then who were absolutely the greats in law enforcement, people like Jerry Adams and Warren O'Brien, and people that mentored me and really taught me how to police in the town of Dover itself. So I like to say I learned how to become a cop here in Dover. I went on to be hired by Norwood full-time, went to the police academy, graduated first in my class from the City of Waltham Police Academy, and then I had the rather unique experience from a lot of police officers that I was assigned to a walking beat for the first five years. I walked south Norwood, which is an area of our town, which is
So no need to exercise that.
No, no. I had plenty, plenty of exercise, a lot of running up and down, three flights of stairs and three deckers going to calls. Five years, and the great part about that is what I learned in Dover, I was able to hone that in Norwood and kind of enhance those person-to-person skills because when you're on a walking post, you don't have the insulation of a car, you don't, you can't roll the windows up, you can't drive away if you don't want to talk to somebody, you have to, you deal with them face to face. And I made friends 30 years, 35 years ago that I still have to this day from dealing with neighborhood problems.
So how big was the area?
About a square mile. But at the time, we had probably eight to 10 barrooms there, so it kind of made it, it made it spicy at times.
And interesting.
It was very interesting. It was eclectic, I guess is the word you'd use now. But on to, after that, became a patrol sergeant, and then a lieutenant, and as a lieutenant, I've been fortunate to run the operations division of the Norwood Department, which is everything in uniform patrol. I was also our hiring and selection coordinator, so I've had the fortune of hiring probably the last 35 or 36 officers, so I'm extensively familiar with the hiring process and everything that goes with that. And the one thing about Norwood is we're, I don't even want to say it's not even our philosophy, it's our ethos that we're a community policing agency. Everything we do is within the eyes of the community, and how does it relate to community policing? And every single decision that's made is made with that in mind. So that's the very strong community policing background that I come from because of that, and that's really what our department is about, is community policing, just doing things with the community.
So Norwood's a very different town from Dover? Well, it's a lot bigger, that's the one thing, and the police department is larger. How do you envision adapting to the smaller police department, and what kind of experiences you think that you had in Norwood will really help you, you know, if you really get the job as chief in Dover?
So I did start here, so I am very familiar with the community, and one of the other things is I spent a lot of time in the town, and ever since I've left here, I feel like I've never left over. My wife and I are kind of avid outdoors people, and, you know, certainly would, you know, my wife Gail has been the wind in my sails throughout this process, and she's been wonderful and wonderfully supportive. But she and I were members of the trustees of reservations, we're constantly hiking, whether it be Poisted Peak or Poisted Farm.
Can I ask you what direction?
Rocket Woods. I give a lot of people directions out of there who have clearly been lost. So I spent a lot of time here, I like the, I'm very familiar with the town. I fish here, I've fished on Claybrook Road for 30-plus years and Willow Street and such, so I certainly know the area. But really, translating my experience in Norwood to Dover is very simple. It's really, again, about the community, and one of the things you're kind of blessed with in Dover is you do have a low crime rate, so that gives you a lot of opportunity to interact with the public. And it's the same thing we do in Norwood, it's really, it's making those connections with people, and it's making connections on a personal basis with people. And I like to say one of the visions I have for your department is everybody in this community should know multiple officers on a first-name basis, and you want to peel back that layer of the police department, the Dover, I like to call it Dover's police department because you're really, it's really part of the town. The Dover Police Department, even an officer's name, but it should be a first name. People should be able to call the station and talk to Mike, or Gary, or Bill, or Fred, and they're going to be able to have that connection, and they're going to be able to meet with them about a personal problem that they might not want to call. They might, it might not be something that arises to the level of calling 911, but it's something that they have a personal problem with that the police can help them. And again, you're blessed with people who are, you know, probably are in a situation where they have good health insurance and they have a good safety network, but at 3:00 in the morning, when something goes awry in their household, the first person that's going to show up is going to be a police officer, and that police officer really needs to be able to be in touch with the community and have that trust of the community to be able to solve that problem.
What are some of the things you would do to create that community?
So again, being blessed with a low crime rate, you have this tremendous opportunity, you have a lot of time, and one of the things is just forming these really tight bonds with the community, and Dover's an outdoor community, so one of the things you need to do is take it outdoors. I mean, you wouldn't place a, you know, a walking man in downtown Dover, it's just not practical. You don't have the business community to support that, which isn't to say that every business in town should not have a police officer come into it every now and again and meet them on a personal basis, that should be a regular. But you have, you have outreaches, you have the trustees of the reservations who you partner with, and it's all about partnerships. Partner with the trustees, partner with your recreation department, partner with your recreation center when it's open next door, the senior center.
Anything about that?
Huge, like you can walk across the street, you have a great access to people. Your churches, we do coffee with a cop. Again, it's, we do it with our various coffee shops. I'm booked solid with trying to, trying to schedule this. You do, you know, one week a month, you know, pick one of the four churches and have the officers, you know, out there meeting the congregation after church, you can connect with them there. Mountain bike patrols, get people out on the trails, get people out where people in Dover are recreating. I'm a huge fan of the comfort dog program. Get something like that to, you know, comfort dog to go out and it's a great icebreaker with people, and I would also, as I've discussed before, I would make sure I'd want a comfort dog that's cross-trained as a search dog as well, in case you have someone that's lost in the woods, a child or an elderly person or something, so you have that much more level of safety. So it's really, it's all partnerships, it's making partnerships in the community. Your schools really need to partner with the schools, your school resource officer is a huge conduit to your kids, and hopefully they can find out things that are going on and prevent them before they happen. As I've said, even when, when someone from Dover Sherborne goes off to college, if they, if they're at a college, say they're at, you know, Yale or Pickett University, and they have a problem, they become a victim of a crime, or they are, they witness a crime, and maybe they don't feel comfortable with the local police there, they should feel comfortable enough with the school resource officer in Dover to be able to call here and say, "Hey, can you walk me through this?" And quite frankly, as your chief, if it wasn't New England College, put somebody in Unmarked and say, "Drive to that college, get that person and help them out, make sure they're okay." Because just because your kids go off to college and they leave the town doesn't mean they're not under our protection, as far as I'm concerned.
Robin, anything else right there?
I couldn't answer.
I know, I feel like we've asked you so many questions, and you've been, you've just been so thoroughly open and honest with us. It feels like, I honestly feel like there's not much else that I can ask or any of the members of the committee can ask that we haven't already asked.
Well, you
No, I just can say that we just want to thank you, you know, and from all of us, and representing not only the town, the board, and all the members of the committee, to say just thank you for this opportunity to get to, to meet you, to know you, to understand how you think and feel, and to watch you interact as men. It's been a pleasure.
I appreciate the process, and as I said, the thoroughness of it gives me great encouragement about how well your town is run, because if you didn't vet the police chief, you know, that would, that would not be a good thing. Obviously, you don't want, you don't want a poor choice of your police chief. But I really think my experience, both working here and working with pretty much my entire career of community policing, I have some, some real good ideas to bring to your department, and I think you have an excellent department to start with, and I think you can really take it to the next level where everybody in Dover is proud of Dover's police, and they will know that. And again, I think that well knowing someone on a first-name basis is huge. You know, you have that, you know, maybe someone's going through text messages on their child's phone, and they think they're in a dating relationship that's bad, and then they're not comfortable. Well, you know what, let's see if Bill or Fred or Mike is working at the station tonight. Have them come by and take a look at this. I mean, if you can get that kind of connection, I think that that's really what you want for, for a town like this. The residents here really demand that level of service, they certainly deserve it.
Thank you.
So, you know, we've had an opportunity, you and I have an opportunity to talk, and like, and the committees have a lot of opportunities to talk to. So is there anything you would like the citizens of Dover to know, to know about you that we haven't already talked about, that you think, you know?
Any hidden gem, you know, that we haven't
I mean, where we went to hike?
For me, it's just, it's the, you know, one of my mentors in policing was Carl Sheridan. He was, he was, I never thought of him as a boss, I thought of him as more like a favorite uncle. He was just such a nice man, and he ran the department so well when I worked there. And for me, the thought of the, the honor of possibly having the position that Carl Sheridan had is just a massive honor, you know, thinking about that. And as I spoke to you before, when your last hire, when you hired Chief McGowan 12 years ago, I really wanted to apply for the position then, and my resume wasn't quite up to where it needed to be at the time. I think since then, I've gained a lot of experience both in community policing and budgeting and hiring and all the other things you would get as a chief. And I think that for the citizens of Dover, I feel like I bring the experience from starting here back in 1987 to come back to Dover, and I think I can use that a lot to, to serve your community and really make a difference in moving your department forward.
Compulsory.
I have. A great place, and then my commitment is to the town of Dover, if you hire me, and I am all in to, to bring some, some ideas and decades of experience here to this department.
Thank you. I just want to remind, we have lots of people who've joined us on Zoom, and we've been speaking with Lieutenant Michael Vendetti from Norwood, he is a finalist along with Joe Vinci, Lieutenant Joe Vinci from Westwood. And Michael, thank you very, very much. I know, we mentioned this on the way in, and I just want to reiterate, what a pleasure it's been, and the hardest thing that I'm going to have to do this week or next week is to call one of the two of you and say that the other person's being offered a job, and that is not something at all I am looking forward to, but I just wanted you to know from the, from the committee, from all of us, what a pleasure it's been.
Thank you very much, and same as well, it's been a huge honor to be carried this far in the process. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mona is going to bring Joe in.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
The next candidate that we will be bringing in is Lieutenant Joseph Vinci. Joe is joining us this evening from Westwood, and Mona is going to usher him in from the green room. And Mona is going to usher him in from the green room. While we're waiting for Lieutenant Vinci, I just want to take the opportunity again to express our gratitude and appreciation to consultant chief Russ Stevens, to public safety consultants. And I would like, if you'll indulge me, to recognize each member of our committee. I've alluded to Kirsten Bartlett, Dan Berger, Paul Capone, who is with us, Joe DeSalvo, who is also on the Zoom, Dan Berger, who came right in on cue. Dan, right here. Sarah Monaco and Nicole Steffarian. The members of our committee, if the camera could get Dan's good side. He's turning. These six wonderful people endured hours and hours with me in the same room. And I apologize for them. They'll probably not take my phone calls again. But it has been, as I said earlier, a tremendously thorough process. And Lieutenant, welcome.
Thank you very much for having me. Happy to be here.
I said earlier that it has been such a pleasure to get to know you, to get to know Michael. This process of literally having two gentlemen who work closely in neighboring communities with us, with each other, who know each other professionally, to be vying for the same job in a very public process is unusual and yet somehow feels really right. So thank you for doing that.
Yeah, thank you for having me. I'm excited to be here.
Thank you.
I think to actually make comments before, John, it's difficult for us. We have two excellent candidates, both of whom we are absolutely certain will be a chief of police somewhere, if not in Dover.
Sure.
And that's what makes this a very difficult decision.
Yeah, I totally understand that.
So what we would like to ask you, you have all the members of the committee here. You've met Robin and I. Is just, give us a little, just speak to the town of Dover.
Sure.
Tell them a little bit about you. We know a lot. And why Dover, why this, why now?
So my name's Joe Vinci. I am currently a lieutenant at the Westwood Police Department. I grew up in Westwood. I was class of 1998 from the high school. I went on to Dartmouth College where I played football and graduated in 2002. And after college, with my degree in government, I went into the financial field for a few years. That wasn't for me. And I took the civil service test and was hired by Westwood PD in June of 2006. So I was a patrol officer there for six years. I made sergeant in June of 2012. I did that for, I think, six years. So I was running the midnight shift, the day shift. And then I made detective sergeant where I was in charge of the detective division within the agency. And then in 2019, I made lieutenant. And I'm currently the patrol operations commander. So that's a fancy way of saying I'm in charge of all uniform personnel at the police department. So I oversee the patrol supervisors, who are the ones actually out on the road with the officers. But I've been doing that for years. I'm married. I have a beautiful wife, Laura. I got two boys, one of whom is off to college in January and my other, who is a junior in high school. We live locally, so I grew up in Westwood. I live in Westwood, I'm local to the area. And the second part was why Dover. I think the style of policing that I'm used to from Westwood PD is, can be easily translated to the town of Dover. I feel like the skill set that I have and the time I've spent working with the community and building partnerships within the community would serve me very well here. You know, in addition to those promotions that I had, I ran the crisis intervention team there where we met with community stakeholders, to include the Department of Mental Health, this Council on Aging, the fire department. So I, I'm very experienced in building collaborative relationships with stakeholders in the community. And I feel like that skill set would serve me very well here. And the timing was right. I had thought about throwing my hat in the ring for other positions, but when this came up, it's next door. Like I said, it just seems like the right fit. It's a beautiful town. And I think that I could do very well here and provide, you know, many years of quality service to the town.
So you know, there's one question I never asked you. It'll be that. Why, what made you decide to take the civil service thing? What was the catalyst?
Well, to be brutally honest, when I was working in the financial world, I was in a cubicle farm. And honestly, I struggled mightily with that. You know, I mean, and my parents, to their credit, they were great when I said, hey, I think I'm going to try the law enforcement world. And they were very supportive, even with having sent me to Dartmouth College. They knew that they wanted me to be happy and to find something that I was passionate about. So they were supportive from day one. And then my brother is a federal agent and he's been doing that since 2001. And he's kind of the one that said, you should try this. And after 9/11, which I experienced in college, I had a strong sense to serve. And I knew it probably wasn't going to be military. And this is, this is the way I chose to serve, so.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Dan, Paul, Joe, Kirsten, is there anything that anyone would like to add or mention or comment? Joe?
Yeah, I just, no questions. I just want to express my enormous gratitude to you for your devotion and dedication to the process. We know it's long, we know it's difficult. We really got a full-time job and a family. And to leave in what we've asked you to do is quite remarkable by itself. So I just want to thank you and wish you and your family a beautiful holiday season.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Same to you, sir.
So, Julie, what do you think would be the biggest challenge in saying the new Dover police chief?
I think the biggest challenge is just assimilating into the group and assimilating into the town. And, you know, we're all creatures of habit. I know what I know and I've been in one place for the last eighteen years. So for me to go to someplace new is going to, that's going to be a challenge for me. But I feel like that's where, when you build relationships and you take the time to meet with your team and to meet with each individual officer that works at that agency and show that this is it and this is where I want to be and invest my time in them. And also to lean on other leaders in the community. You know, the town administrator, Mike, you know, to lean on him, other directors. I do know he's new, but, and I think that's important when you rely on other people that are in director positions or other executive positions. So, you know, you can say, hey, can you help me with this? I'm new to, this is new to me. And it's, there's no shame in asking for help. No one is expected to know everything. And I'm more than happy to do that. If I don't know the answer, I'm not going to go down on a ball of flames. I'm going to go out there hunting for it, so.
Don't ask them for directions. That could be problematic.
Yeah, gotcha.
Is there anything, any gem that we might have missed along the way that you would just like to leave us with? Leave the board with or the committee with?
I just, well, I'll say, if it's me that has the honor to be the chief here in the town of Dover, you're going to get a hard-working, down-to-earth, approachable person. It's a serious job. It's a very important job in any community. But in a small community like this, being approachable and knowing, having people know that they can come to you with an issue, I think is very important. And if any of you were to go ask the folks of Westwood or my peers at Westwood PD, if that's what I'm all about, I think every single one would absolutely say that. I'm a regular guy. I don't take myself too seriously. I'm a family man and I'll give you guys everything I have in terms of effort, if I'm fortunate enough to be selected.
I'll tell you what I always told Chief McGowan. Of course I have to respect him. He hasn't gone.
Thank you. And it's been a long process. I gave the, sort of the overview to everyone just as Michael was walking in. So explained in detail what you went through. It was a lot. And the committee was so impressed. We have been impressed with everyone throughout the process. And we really, really do appreciate it. And we wish you the best of everything. And we're going to have an opportunity to deliberate, to have conversations this evening. And then we're going to have a conversation with one on one with our committee.
Okay. Great. Yeah, thank you very much for everyone's time. And like I said, I'm honored to be here and I'm really appreciative to have made it this far in the process. So very exciting.
It's almost over.
Exactly, yeah, exactly. Very good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you. Lucky to have a meeting tonight. Thank you. Thanks. Take care.
Take care. So, John, what I want to know is, was our process different than other towns? Was it longer or is this just the process?
No, it's the process. It is the process. So Russ was very deliberate in his giving us the expectations of what this will be, how we will go through it. And right to the left, all along the way. Did you get all of it? And Dan?
Because it was a huge commitment for all of the committee. I mean, a time, a time commitment.
It was. It was, there was a lot of reading. There was a lot of, there was a lot of deliberation amongst the committee. We really checked in with each other on every part of the process. And I will say that I was convinced, I actually learned a lot from the other members of the committee of things that I just wasn't aware of. It was really helpful.
You know, I envy those of you on the committee because you spent a lot of time with each of the candidates and you were able to witness them answering the various questions, going through the tests or the
Assessments.
Assessments that were done. For me, I met each candidate alone last week. And I'm really glad that I did that because I was able to, in an hour plus, get to know each of the candidates and learn about their experiences and learn about why this was an important next step for each of them. What was interesting to me is both candidates are at the same point in their career. And this was the first time either of them actually made the decision to apply for a chief's job. Michael, you know, for him, it was coming back to where he started. And I think for Joe, the attraction is the like, the communities are very similar, which gave him, you know, somewhat of a sense of comfort. But both of them, in my conversation, said, you know, this was the next step for either, for both. It was what they wanted to do. They did not know everything. And I really liked that about each of the candidates. You know, they admitted that they would have to learn things. They both had different types of ideas of what, how they would approach the department, where they wanted the apartment to be, the department to be. They both noted, although differently, that they wanted to take our department to the next level. And for me, that was music to my ears because I don't think any of us do anything 100% correctly and there's always room for improvement. Personally, this is a very difficult decision. Both candidates, you know, from my one-hour conversation with each and not really witnessing anything else other than, you know, listening to your reports, they both had the skills that are necessary to be the next police chief in Dover. The question is, is there some differentiating factor? I know you had mentioned that the committee was 50/50, right?
Right.
So for me, again, as expected, they both did a great job this evening. I don't think as a town we could go wrong. But I would like to sleep on my decision. And I would like to suggest that maybe we do a special meeting before the end of the week or early next week just to vote. I don't know how you feel.
I completely agree. I think that we both, having had this opportunity, having had an opportunity to, for everyone this evening, everybody watching at home, everyone who watched this on Zoom, to see the candidates, to be able to have the opportunity with almost the entire selection committee here in attendance this evening. It's just been such a thorough process. We cannot make a bad decision. The unfortunate part about it is we have to make a decision. And we have to make a decision. I would really like to do that, Robin. I'd like to have the opportunity to come back at a special meeting later this week and make the announcement. I think that is absolutely the right thing to do.
I just need a little more time. I mean, if anybody on the committee wants to share any wisdom with me, I would appreciate your comments.
I'll just share my own experience sitting through the assessments. Because I thought that was a very valuable tool in terms of really assessing how the candidates acted spontaneously, right, in a very stressful situation. So we had people there watching it plus the people running the assessments in these various scenarios. And to me, it was about how they not only communicated verbally, but also how they communicated from a body mind view standpoint as well, which I thought was really amazing. Because they didn't have any time to think about these scenarios and they were, you know, very difficult situations. Very different and very difficult situations. I thought all of them looked well. I thought, for the most part, the last John here was better than the other ones, in my own opinion. I didn't get a chance to interview him, but I did see him during the assessments and I thought he was way better than the other candidates.
So just having not gone through the assessments, so is it different kinds of scenarios that they rely each day with?
There was one where, there was a scenario where somebody was walking down the street and a neighbor had called the police because they saw somebody strange in the neighborhood. This gentleman happened to be a black gentleman. So they had to deal with that issue, why are you here? I'm just, I live nearby, I'm just walking. There was another one where there was a sergeant, a woman sergeant, that was speaking out of turn in town to some of the government officials in town and sort of voicing her unhappiness with the way the police force was being managed. And so they had to confront that and talk about how they would deal with internal issues and personnel. So it was a woman, a senior woman, obviously, in the police force, but also a personnel issue as well. I'm trying to think of the other ones or a couple of others.
Yeah, the personnel assessment, the neighbor assessment. And then there was an assessment of the chain of command. There was really a deep dive into the chain of command question. There was really a deep dive into the chain of command question. Union issues were brought up, questions of, questions of appropriate. As Dan alluded to, there were things that weaved through various segments of it. But it was all, the assessment center was staffed by three acting chiefs of other towns. One woman who played the role in the case Dan was speaking to of the sergeant, who was the interdisciplinary roles. The amount of knowledge that the finalists had was outstanding. And Paul and Joe can probably speak to it better than we can because they've obviously worn a uniform and... Do you have any particular comments?
No, they were both very impressive. They both had similar experience. So I'm not surprised that they did so well with that. It was sort of a tough decision to differentiate them, but at some point you have to, or you have to be able to. Once and always somehow. So I mean, we could maybe establish how close the decisions are.
And I can see that, just how it spans, it's a really, it's a really tough decision.
Joe, Kirsten, would you like to add anything to Robyn's comments or to Dan's, Dan or Paul's comments?
Yeah, I'll add something briefly, then I have to jump off to an easier meeting. They're waking up and we're getting ready, well, some of us are getting ready to sleep. Yeah, I want to echo what pretty much everyone has said here, but particularly what John and Paul have said. But we can't, first of all, we can't make a bad decision. We have two really high-quality candidates, and I think our town would be beneficial with that. I mean, either of them. I did share some of my comments with all of our committee members, and I think we agree unanimously on a small nuance which would favor one over the other that, you know, I think we have all shared. So, but their level of experience and professionalism is really superior. I'm pleased to have been a part of the committee and support my committee members in whatever part of the decision that we're selecting.
Thank you, Joe. Kirsten?
Hi, John. Hi, Chris. I just wanted to thank you, John, for asking me, it was a pleasure to meet and to work with everybody. I don't think you can make a mistake, but I'll say my voting has changed. So it's, you can't make a mistake, but my vote has changed just after tonight. It's just that close. So where I was under before, I'm now back with the majority of the committee, so I see it. So take your time, and you can't make a mistake, but thank you.
I understand where you're coming from, and, you know, I would just
It's hard.
Right. I would just like to say thank you to all of you for serving. I hope you all found it a rewarding experience and that you will be open to volunteering on some other committees because the input of this community is what makes us special. Thank you all.
It really is. Thanks again to everyone. So, Michael, are we good to move on?
Yep, so Mona and I will work with you to coordinate a time hopefully later this week.
We need too much time. Otherwise, I might be like Kirsten, going back and forth.
And to our committee, please, don't feel like it's necessary to say we've kept you away from your families for a lot of hours. And I just want to say again to all the members of our committee, and for those of you that didn't hear it the first time, the ones that are here and on Zoom, Kirsten Bartlett, Dan Berger, Paul Capone, Joe DeSalvo, Sarah Monaco, and Nicole Seferian, thank you. Can't say it enough, thank you for the hours and time and the commitment that you've put into this.
Absolutely welcome. Thank you.
Much appreciated.
We are going to
We have to get back.
Get on track. We're trying to get on track.
So the next item of business here is to appoint Ellen Wyberg to the Historical Committee. And I am so not used to having paper. I'm much better with the computer.
So much better to pull down.
Why can't I find the motion? So first of all, I would like to thank Ellen because she does a lot for the town. I'm not sure if many of you know, but she also is a MMT. And I thank her for being willing to serve on the Historical Commission. Is it the commission? Yep. And I would move to appoint Ellen Wyberg to the Historical Commission to fill the unexpired term of Steve Criscle, which ends on June 30th, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, John Jeffries.
Aye, Robin Hunter. Wow, that's how we save some time. All right, there's only two of us. Yeah, you can leave. Although the rest of the meeting is gonna be riveted. You sure you want to leave? Thank you. Nice to see you.
Thanks, Paul.
So the next item of business is the renewal of the common vehicular licenses for Dunkin' Donuts, the American Legion Post 209, and for Poisett Farm. And this is per Mass General Law, Chapter 140. All food establishments engaging in the preparation and/or providing food for seated patrons on premises of a permanent structure must obtain a vehicular license issued by the Board of Selectment. And I believe you do this annually.
Annually.
Right, it's just an annual renewal.
So here, this is gonna be a very interesting thing for our first night. I can't vote. We could deliberate, but I can't vote because I'm in a butter.
Is that correct?
That's what I was told last year. And you weren't here.
So that's just for the Poisett Farm?
Oh, for Poisett Farm, I can vote for Poisett, but I can't vote for the Victulars license at Dunkin'. The Legion, I can't. Not far enough away. I'm even far enough away, but Dunkin', I was told, I'm too close. I'm in a butter.
Okay.
It just came out last year. Although, can I say that I am a frequent visitor? And I love Sebastian, and I love all the people on weekends, but I can't vote. So what do we do?
Well, why don't we?
So I can actually pull it up right now. There is a, something called a Rule of Necessity.
You need your Dunkin' Donuts.
Absolutely. I need Sebastian. Sebastian and his crew.
So under limited circumstances, an elected board may be able to use this Rule of Necessity to permit participation of an otherwise disqualified member in order to allow the board to act.
Okay.
So in this case, my recommendation, sorry, this is on the slide, but I would recommend you do vote under the Rule of Necessity. We'll just note that for the minutes. Because we only have two members, and we do need a quorum to vote.
We do need these of business.
And these are businesses that need to operate. These are legally required licenses. They're not optional.
So, wow, all right, Rule of Necessity.
So invoking the Rule of Necessity as a disqualified, normally disqualified member will allow your participation in this matter, given the current vacancy.
Thank you.
All right, so then should I say I move to approve the issuance of the common vehicular licenses for the American Legion Post 209 and Poisett Farm, effective January 1st, 2024, and December 30th, 2024? And with respect to Dunkin' Donuts, we will utilize the Law of Necessity and approve, and approve that vehicular license.
That sounds great. So I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye, John Jeffries.
Aye, Robin Hunter. Wow, I'm impressed. You're new.
I pulled that out of the Wayback Machine.
All right.
All right.
And now the next item of business is the annual town meeting warrant. Look ahead.
So not much to discuss at this point. We're working through all of the standard warrant articles that, you know, you traditionally see each year. We have sent out the memo after your last meeting, last, just under a week ago, to, that the warrant is open. So we do expect warrant articles, particularly from the planning board. They're working through some of their proposed articles. One addition that we'll be making here is an additional revolving fund article for the community center. Currently doesn't exist, but there'll be rental fees, user group fees, things of that nature that we think would make sense to go back into the operation of the building. So that'll be included in the annual revolving fund article, but it will be a new fund within that. There may be others we'll continue to work through, but like I said, at this point, it's mostly just the standard. And we'll come forward, you know, with additional articles as we receive them.
And so so far, we haven't received any citizens' comments and any citizens' petition.
Correct, correct.
All right, so then we'll just, I guess, keep this as a regular agenda.
Yes, exactly.
Until the warrant closes and the warrant closes again, just as a reminder.
Game, game, twelve.
Thank you. Good try.
There's a lot going on to remember the dates. It's a good thing.
So then the next item of business are just Board of Selectment updates. And since we just had a meeting, I can give you a quick Housing Task Force update. We have a next meeting on Wednesday.
I can tell you that Dave and I, the only person missing is Kate, and that we have had conversations about the laser-focused aspects that we're going to be handling for the investment committee and the investment committee questions for the specifics with both editors. And the upcoming agenda, by the way, I think is on
Right, so the one thing we'll
Page right after that.
Right, it will do that special meeting, hopefully be a Zoom, hopefully before the end of the week. As I said, don't give me too much time. It's a hard enough decision on my own. And then the one, the one item I wanted to, so our next meeting is December 28th. And you're gonna be
Zoom.
Yeah, it's Florida.
I'll be in Florida.
So I was just wondering if anybody would entertain my suggestion to maybe move that meeting earlier, like to 5:30? So then that way, since it's vacation week, then that way we could wrap things up earlier.
Fabulous idea.
Outscreen.
Does that work?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, that's, that'll be great.
And then I didn't have anything to add for the other items. I think what might be useful is, since I wasn't expecting to be chair, maybe you and I could go over Bob's list and make sure that things don't fall through the cracks, and you and I can just divide things out.
Yeah, perfect.
Absolutely.
Right, because he was doing a lot. I think the most important things already got out, like the roles and responsibilities, the warrant memo. I just want to make sure that we continue with the momentum.
Absolutely.
Okay. Excellent. And now, the floor's all yours.
Well, I'll make a similar comment to yours, which is it's been less than a week, so there's not a lot of new updates.
So the budget's not done.
So we, you know, continue to spend a lot of time on the operating and capital budgets. I was welcomed by the Warrant Committee last week on Wednesday night. I did a similar presentation to them as well.
But they're tough questions.
They had some good questions, yes, absolutely. So I was appreciative of that invitation, and I think that was a good way to kick off the season. That night, actually, because I was here, I decided to stay for the meeting. I was able just to step outside briefly for the tree lighting ceremony. So I just wanted to say what a neat, awesome experience that was. And then also, for those of you watching in a similar fashion, there'll be menorah lighting this Thursday, starting at 5:45 here at the townhouse as well. So tis the season, and it's pretty exciting to see all the activity. And the waffles were really good at the waffle truck that was here, so.
For the tree lighting?
For the tree lighting, yes, yeah.
Mona, you didn't tell me that the waffles were good. I said they were good. All right. I know, it is, it's, suddenly I feel as though holidays are here. And I saw nothing. So then the last item on our agenda today is really the consent agenda. And on that, we're gonna approve special one-day liquor licenses for December 23rd, January 4th, 5th, and 20th. And aren't you lucky, Mona? We can both sign them now.
That's right.
Just like the old days. Harken back.
Do I have a second?
You have a second, absolutely second. All in favor?
Aye, Robin Hunter.
Aye, John Jeffries.
All right. And that, with that, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second, we are, and by the way, ahead of schedule.
Okay.
Ahead of schedule.
All right.
Thank you.
In honor of Bob Springett, we are ahead of schedule.
Ahead of schedule.
That is very appropriate.
It is very, very appropriate. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all, and good evening. Did we make that motion?
Yes, yeah, we did make. I second.
Just vote.
Oh, all in favor? Aye, Robin Hunter.
Aye, John Jeffries.
Good evening, everyone.
Good night, everyone.